...of the Board of Select for the Town of North Annover, Monday, November 16th. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. 2015. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I don't think she's here. I'm gonna start with the approval of minutes.
Motion, approval of the minutes for November 4th, 2015, open session minutes as written.
Oh, God, I started out wrong, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, Lauren. Do I have a motion for the executive session minutes?
Motion, approval of the November 4th, 2015, executive session minutes as written.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
I abstain. Moving into communications and announcements. Dottie's Delights, but I don't see, so we're gonna... Nope. Improvements to the Veterans Memorial located at the high school. Dottie's Delights is not here.
Mr. Rand, to the back door?
Yeah, Mr. Rand.
Mr. Rand.
Oh, is he here for Dottie's Delights?
No, I think we're gonna move on to the back.
Oh, yes, Mr. Rand, I'm sorry, come on up, we're gonna move on, we're gonna move on from new business, right up to you. Good evening.
Hi. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I brought it to the attention of the town manager, excuse me, that the veterans memorial at the high school had been damaged. And actually, it's been damaged on several different occasions. And I wanted to make sure that that memorial got repaired. I'll give you this photograph, and it's time by morning, when the photograph was taken, the plaque was half-mast. And it's at half-mast today. And what happened was that the memorial got hit over the winter. And we had, when we originally planned the memorial, as you can see there, we put in hedges. That was the memorial was laid out by the same architect that laid out North Annover High School. And he proposed at the time that we put granite in that area. And that would've been another $50,000. And we just didn't have the wherewithal to, at that time, go back to the people who had donated to this memorial and ask them for more money. So, we put the hedges in. The hedges haven't done what we wanted them to do, fill in nicely and make a beautiful hedge. So, I met the other day with the Director Public Works and his assistant, and we talked about different things that could be done to improve the memorial. And one of the things that we looked at were the benches. The benches need to be moved back so that they're not being hit every winter by the plows. And the hedges need to be removed, and they're being struck also. So, what I thought would be appropriate would be to move the benches back and remove the hedges. And that way, we eliminate 90% of the upkeep in the memorial as it stands right now. The memorial needs a great deal of upkeep, and it's kinda hard to do it right now. So, what I propose is that we move the benches back, we move the hedges in, we put new, all of the pavers will have to come up to move the benches in, so we would have to put new pavers down. The hedges, like I say, are being damaged all the time, and I think it's time to come out. I contacted the Veterans Department and told the commander, if she had any more suggestions for the area, to please call me and let me know. And I have been, I haven't, as of this time, received any comments from them. So, what we'd like to do is move those benches back. The benches have been struck twice, three times now. And the memorial itself was damaged once, and we've been able to put it back. The face of the memorial has six decals on it. Those decals, if you go into the high school, there's an iPad, and I'm sure none of these young people sitting here tonight have viewed that iPad. You take the iPad, you go out, you press it on those decals, and it gives you the history of each one of those men who died in Vietnam. What we'd like to do is, the more I thought about the benches, and they've been hit and they've been damaged a little bit, but so have the men in the Vietnam War. And what I proposed, when I talked to the chairman of the Public Works, was to take those benches, as they are now, and move them back and let the damage stay on them. The proposal that I got from the man who originally put them there was $2,700. And to do the two benches, that would be a little over $5,000. If we can get the whole project done for $5,000, we can do what we wanna do, and we won't have to appropriate any more money than the $5,000. And the benches will be scarred, and they will show some wear. But...
So, what you hoping for is...
Those men, those men who came to on them, that they show some wear to.
So, Mr. Rand had identified some damage to the two bench stones that had taken place, if you're familiar with the location, which I know the board is, there's a roadway leading from the high school parking lot up to the backfield, the elevated backfield of the high school. And as a function of activity along that road, along with the excessive amount of snow we had over the winter, with the snow pressing up against those stones, one of the benches actually had been struck. The other one, clearly, from the damage that we've all observed, on the corners of the benches, must've been struck at a different time. So, we're supportive of the fact, Mr. Rand went off on his own and provided us with an estimate to replace one of the benches. I make the feeling, in the long term, is not just to replace a bench and put it in harm's way again, but it's to move those benches, as Mr. Rand identified, further away from the roadway.
Like on the side of it?
Yeah, a little closer to the main stone.
Your attention, Mr. Rand?
Yes.
Like on each side of the main stone, where you're gonna pull, you wanna pull out the bushes?
Uh-huh.
That's okay. You wanna pull out the bushes and put the benches on either side, right?
And then, I had to know the suggestion, that I suggested that we put a little part of the wall in back of each one of the benches, and that would protect the benches somewhere.
So, we've, thank you, Mr. Rand. So, Bruce has been out there, along with Tim, has taken a look at it. We'll probably have some recommendations to the steps that could be taken to make sure that after we move the benches, that we can protect them, whether it's a wall that's identified, or some kind of balustrade, or bolster that provides some level of protection. Mr. Rand also identified that the pavers in that area, even without moving the benches, the pavers need some attention. The question really would be, I think, Mr. Rand, I was not familiar with the figure, but Mr. Rand identified originally the cost may have been $50,000 to put sort of granite level pavers. We're gonna get some estimates, obviously, that's at a dollar level, which puts us all in a difficult spot. So, we're gonna get some prices, what it would take to replace those pavers or improve them, so that we'd get some attention to detail to them, once the benches are moved. So, the benches don't sit on the pavers, their, the pavers are built around them, so we're gonna have to do some paperwork as well. And we'll, I'll come back to you with some more specifics about the nature of the improvements proposed. Because in the long term, obviously, having them continue to be struck is not the situation we're comfortable with.
No. In particular, after the Town of North Annover specifically recognized our Vietnam veterans last week, and formally welcomed them home. So, I, yeah, I look forward to getting additional information on how to fix this.
Could I just say one thing? For the students here, we spoke earlier about being involved in your town and everything. Mr. Rand has spent his life involved in North Annover. He served as a police officer for many years in North Annover, and then in retirement, he's been involved in many boards and commissions that have done amazing things. So, Mr. Rand is a wonderful example of a person who has really served his town and continues to serve his town. So, thank you for that service.
Great. Okay, we'll look forward to more info. Moving on to the Community Choice Aggregation Program with Colonial Power Group.
At last meeting, I had provided you with a PowerPoint presentation identifying the specifics of community aggregation. If you recall, it came up originally at a meeting about a year ago. We had a conversation about the benefits to the community by being involved in the program. Seemed to get some positive support from the board last time. So, I've asked Representatives DeSmak, Capodanno, Bernie Lynch is here as well, on behalf of Colonial Power, to talk about the program in a little more specificity, and then talk about what the next steps could be. Just as a side mark, so you know, I provided a copy of the letter that went out from the city of Haverhill to its residents regarding a similar program. This went out with, I believe, either as a separate mailing or with the tax bills, to give the residents an overview and a brief sort of list of FAQ, so the residents would understand what's happening there in Haverhill.
Good evening, my name is Mark Capodanno, I'm with Colonial Power. Just one little aside, we were chosen by the Merrimack Planning Commission in an RFP process. I don't know if you had mentioned that last week or not, but just wanted to let everyone know it was an open and bidding process. Municipal aggregation as a concept has been, since 1997, has been out there. It's just recently taking hold across the state. It really, over the last two winters with the high spikes, has really started to take effect. So, this process, from a local standpoint, requires a town meeting vote and the vote of the select board on an aggregation plan. After that, you'd move on to the DOER. The plan that you vote on at the select board would be vetted by the DOER staff, onto the Department of Public Utilities. At that point, there'd be a public hearing. Once the public hearing happens, you'd be eligible to go out to the marketplace. This program, what is it about? It's about local control stability and your ability to kind of forge your energy future. This group gets to decide how they wanna receive their energy. They want it to be green energy, they want it to be wind, or they want it to be solar or hydro. It no longer has to be the system mix that you get. Lots of competitive, super-competitive pricing. So, Haverhill is a perfect example. I think they're at 9.9, it's 100% green product, compared to the 13.038 that people are just paying for a system mix. It also gives you the ability to, if somebody has a project, a solar project, things of that nature, that they're looking to do in town, the aggregation can help fund that. We can buy the energy in the Solar Rex and those kind of things to help support those kind of programs that are going on. So, we've done it in other towns, the Town of Lancaster, they had a municipally-owned solar array, and we buy all the attributes. The town takes the power, but we take all the S-Rex to help with the renewable portfolio standards. In a nutshell, that's basically aggregation at 20,000 feet. I didn't know if there were any questions, or you wanted any more details about any of the steps or what was required.
To put it in context, just for those folks who didn't catch the last meeting, the aggregation really is the, what I will call, the municipal residential load. So, this is less about the municipality and more about the individual rate payer. So, National Grid announced last week that they were going a little over 13 cents. This is for supply, right?
That's right.
It's not for the, it's not for the six components to a bill, we won't get into the six components, but five of them, we don't have control of, and I'm gonna be off by one component or another, but the supply piece is what we're talking about. So, what cost can the rate payer, the resident pay for that supply versus what National Grid is offering it at? And what I mentioned at last meeting, which is important to understand, is this is not a competition with National Grid. National Grid does not care whether or not our residents buy their electricity from National Grid or someone else. They add no profit to the supply component. This is just about giving residents an opportunity to buy electricity on the supply side, cheaper than they can buy it on their own by going to National Grid. Sorry.
That's exactly correct. Individually, you don't have a load profile at a supplier, it seems advantageous, but when you bring all the residents together, they'll absolutely bid on the load. And I wanna state one thing that I should've stated out of the gate. This program is an opt-out program. So, requiring the residents' inaction not to be included. Everyone would be included unless they just signed the card, went on the internet, or made a phone call. So, it's an opt-out program. I wanna make sure that that's clear, and I should've said that originally. It is an opt-out, meaning everyone's included until they have some type of inaction.
So, Ms. Capodanno, what could we expect for an average rate, or an average homeowner to save? Do you have some statistics on it?
Absolutely. So, depending on the winter, last winter, when rates were, you know, astronomical, I think we were probably averaging, so I'll give you an actual example, the city of Lowell was paying about 10.8 cents compared to 16.273 for the supply, so about $35 a month.
Per resident?
That was at the all-time highs. This winter, let's use Haverhill as a proxy, you're probably looking, if you have 750 KWH on a monthly basis, you're probably looking at around $23, $24 a month?
Per resident?
Per resident, per month.
With the new numbers?
With the Haverhill numbers, 9.975 compared to 13.038.
What I mean, today's numbers versus the high numbers?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct. And that's ever-changing, so you could choose to do a two-year contract to stabilize rates. National Grid is always gonna change twice, twice a year. They're gonna change their rates on November and May 1st.
So, it's basically $300 a month, a year, excuse me?
Correct.
So, it balances out, because if you had a two-year rate, what's gonna happen is when you compare it to the winter rate, that's where your savings is gonna be, that, because we're gonna get, end up with a flat rate for a two-year period. So, when you get back to the summer rates, the rate that we have on the competitive bid will likely be much, much closer to National Grid's rate, because National Grid changes its rates every six months. Winter rate, summer rate, winter rate, summer rate. Our point would be that if we go out to bid and that rate doesn't beat the market, we just don't accept the bid.
Exactly. There's no cost.
The resident defaults to National Grid, and life never changes.
That's exactly right.
It's not a separate bill, it's not a separate, just a line item.
And the nice thing is, is anyone can opt out at any time and get back in, without fear penalty.
And get back in?
Or get back in, that's correct. In or out, both ways, the resident can move back and forth at their leisure.
Okay. Maybe, Lauren, can the entire community opt out? Can we opt out as a town?
You couldn't opt out of the contract as a town, but each individual person could opt out.
I see.
So, you would be signing a contract with the supplier for a certain amount of time. And the town would be under contract, but each individual, all you do is bring the load, i.e. the resident, and then the resident makes the decision on their own whether they'd like to participate or not.
Unless the bid, unless the bid came back, there wasn't competitive to the market, say for some reason it was higher than the National Grid's rate, we would just not accept the bid.
Yeah, that had to happen, okay.
Yeah.
So, if your customer was already enrolled in a green power supply option?
Yes.
You said, or at least in the handout that was provided to us, it says, "We must opt out of your program if we wanna continue getting our green power supply." How are those customers notified that they need to now reapply?
They wouldn't be included in, so we have some trouble with National Grid data. But if you'd already made a choice, you're already with a green supply, maybe you'd already chosen, and we wouldn't even get your name, but if you'd already chosen to green up with National Grid, those customers are excluded from the program. They can always join, but they don't get the mailing.
Those are the people that already have solar on their roof?
Not necessarily solar, that's a, that's a financial transaction that can be part of the aggregation, absolutely part of it.
This isn't about solar.
No, I know, but there's a bazillion people in town who have solar now, so, but how does it affect them?
If you're enrolled with, like, Veridian, though, that's an example of a green power...
Veridian would've already made a choice, or Direct Energy, or Constellation. Those people would not even receive the mailing, because they'd already made a choice. This is only for people on basic service.
Okay.
But if you were on Veridian and you did receive the mailing, that would mean that National Grid had made a mistake on your account, and you just wanna opt out. We'd always make sure that the consumer was made whole, one way or the other there.
Well, like you said, there's no, there's no open or closed enrollment period, so we can transition whenever we want.
That's exactly correct. There's a 30-day before the program starts, in case people don't wanna participate at all. There's a 30-day opt-out window before, but the programs we've always run, always allowed for an opt-out or an opt-in at any time during that contract.
Can we define that through the bid process?
That's exactly correct.
Let me ask you this, even though their bills might be individual, would there be any restriction for a large condo community, or anything like that, or is it still just per?
By meter.
Or like...
If by in bulk, through Direct Energy, I'm ready.
So, each person will have, if you happen to have five different meters at your house, you'll get five different opt-outs. You could opt two of the accounts out, three of them stay in, completely flexible from that standpoint.
So, the condos would be more, where they have some, you know, if you have seven electricity...
Where it was included, or it was included in their bill, but I just thought, maybe just because of the structure or whatever, it would maybe put some kind of a restriction, so you're saying not, it will be by per user or by meter?
It's literally by meter, so if somebody had...
That's good, that's good.
Five meters at their house, they would get five opt-out cards, and they could choose which meters were in and out.
Okay.
Okay.
So, next step, Sid, I'm looking for from the board, if there's an interest to do this, would be receipt, drafting an article which would appear on the draft warrant a couple of months from now, because it needs town meeting action.
What's with the couple of months?
Couple of months.
He brought it up, not me.
It's amazing how quickly they hear.
It's not a couple of months?
It is.
You're right.
What are some of the tough questions we can expect from residents around this?
Yeah, they are.
Some of the, I think the biggest question I get, some people have an issue with the opt-out. Other than that, I always look at it as that the town's bringing a choice that you didn't have prior, but some people have an issue with having to do something to remove themselves from the program. I would say that's the biggest hurdle for aggregation. But for the most part, it's a choice that you didn't have last winter. That's the way I see it, but other people have issue with having to do something to get out of the program. Other than that...
Do people have, and I realize it's, you know, the service is the service, do people have concerns that they're gonna get a lower quality of service? And I know, you know, we've already discussed that, National Grid is still going to be providing other services, just the source, but...
The questions do get asked that they believe, so, let me just state this right here, National Grid is simply a poles and wires company. They no longer by lock and own generation, so they're like Verizon, they don't care who your long-distance carrier is, they just come out and fix poles and wires. So, from that standpoint, there's nothing to worry about degradation as far as service is concerned with storms being out, other than the regular issues that we have with the monopoly.
Nor does it affect their profit margin, which...
At all.
Does it affect either their investment?
They literally support these programs. Any way you can get electricity cheaper helps them out.
Right.
I just want to throw to my community, the biggest question is what happens if my power goes out. You know, you still called National Grids.
Candles.
Yeah. Yeah, buy candles, right?
That's a big question.
Yeah. And they're gonna think, they're not gonna have that same level of service, you know, and I think that's one of the concerns. But I think we, as a board and as a town, would need to make sure it's very clear through some kind of information, whatever.
Campaign.
Campaign, thank you.
Absolute educational campaign, as a matter of fact, that's what Mr. Lynch is here for, kind of. He's actually implemented this program for the city of Lowell.
Mr. Lynch is the former city manager in Lowell, amongst other...
I'll accept your condolences.
So, our next step would be to draft a warrant article, I mean, an article for the warrant, for town meeting? Is that what you said?
Yes.
Do you need an actual vote on that? Or would you...
I'd appreciate a vote to make sure that we're heading in the right direction. You still get the vote on the warrant again a couple of months from now, obviously, it wouldn't remove that authority, but that way I have some marching orders.
Okay.
Great.
I don't know if I have a motion for that or not.
I'll make a motion to direct the town manager and his staff to draft an article for the town meeting warrant to take up the action of Community Choice Aggregation Program.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to the lake cleanup acknowledgement from Merrimack College.
We had a fantastic turnout, there's a memo contained in your bag, it's obviously a large group of people were involved, a number of different groups, including the Mack Gives Back program, and it was a fantastic turnout, they covered a tremendous amount of space around the lake and cleaned it up. And Bruce sent the memo acknowledging the individual groups, I don't know if you wanna read some of the people involved.
Yeah, I actually would like to. It's Peter Boynton, who is our harbor master, his wife Susan, and son Paul. Jennifer Hughes, our conservation administrator. Julie Giglio and Sean Rock from the water treatment plant. Planning board members Laura McSherry, David Kellogg, and Lynn Rudnicki. Members of the Sustainability Committee, Steve Foster, Bob Rafferty, and Shep Spear. The high school environmental club, which was coordinated by their faculty advisor, Charles Anderson. Mack Gives Back, which was Merrimack College students, coordinated by Alicia Rapucci. The trustees of the reservation sent Greg Dean. Wheelie Brader had Scott Emerson there. North Annover Country Club had Stephen Core there. Brooks School, Andrea Hines, Andrew Hines, John Fahey, Meredith Bowden, and Hunter O'Donnell. Debris was also collected by DPW, and traffic safety was by the NAPD. Bunch of wonderful, wonderful folks to come out and do this, and it seems the trustees of the reservation, as well as Edgewood and Rolling Ridge, did clean up along their shores in particular. Yeah, this is, this is great. What a fantastic turnout for people to show up and do that, because it surprisingly can get dirty really quickly.
As we can.
Yeah, this is great, this is great. Thank you to all.
Take the word back to any, to the faculty and students, it's great.
We have job posting and vacancy law, which is, that is up on the website too, right? Always? Anything you wanna jump out at here that you wanna share, or no?
Obviously, we've, although later on, I'm gonna ask that you, under consent items, approve the treasured or authorized documents we can talk about. Obviously, Jennifer Yarrett has announced her resignation. I believe she's leaving on the 23rd. We've already started to receive resumes, and we're working aggressively to fill that slot.
I'll be available.
Okay.
Gonna have to move your desk, gone. And obviously, we're looking to fill the Assistant Superintendent Lab Director position, which I had identified and communicated to the board. We continue to try to find the tree climber position, that's a becoming increasingly specialized role that we're working aggressively to fill, and the rest are sort of the regular turnover of positions as we go from week to week.
You know, I saw a few that come up on the Mass Municipal Association's website.
Usually, management-level positions are above that.
I saw that the other day, yeah.
And we'll use other professional publications, depending on the nature of the position. So, some of the water treatment plant positions will appear in Mass Water Works and various trade publications.
Next, we have our schedule from December through June, subject to change on occasion.
Subject to change.
But it'll be posted on the website for now.
So, Ms. Burzilov has worked through a schedule that gets us through town meeting and slightly beyond, or into the end of the fiscal year, and again, this is a tentative schedule. If the board needs to change any of these dates as time goes on, we try to work around holidays as best we can, it can be a little tricky at times, but if any of these result in a conflict over time, then just let us know, we'll try to change.
When will we be moving out of here to go to...
It's great, communication, good communication segue. Tentative date for move would be January 11th.
So, we'll have January 4th last meeting in here?
January 14th. So, I said at last meeting that we'd go through November and then move, and, okay, I was trying to be firm on a date, but I think we can hold a December 14th meeting here, there's no reason we can't.
Okay.
And then, as of January, the January 4th meeting, I think we will hold out of the building, so we can get used to moving on to the school administration building, but our, at this point, we're shooting at a move date of January 11th, with a return in mid-October after the building is renovated.
Okay. I have a communication and an announcement this evening. I want a big round of applause and congratulations to the North Annover 7th grade Super Bowl champs yesterday, the only ones in town that made it, and they won the Super Bowl yesterday, and I think that's a big deal, and the big trophy went into the middle school cabinet today.
Do you have any family members?
I may, I may have, I may have a son on the team, I may.
Who did they play? Just... Who did they play?
They played Marblehead. It was 12 to 0. It was a shutout, and that team truly had an incredible season, and Coach Frank Cunnealy is the head coach, and he, a lot of credit. Those boys from fifth to seventh grade have come a long way. It's always good when our little kids win, you know, big for the town, so that's my announcement for this evening. Any other communications or announcements before we move on?
We have the parade. Oh, yeah, right, go ahead. No, go ahead.
No, go for it.
I was just going to mention that the parade is on November 29th, right?
Yes.
The Christmas parade, Saturday after Thanksgiving. I don't think we're meeting between now and then, right?
No, we are not.
So that's always a good take. Phil?
Starts at noon?
Starts at noon.
Starts at 29, 29 to 28.
29, Saturday after Thanksgiving. 28, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Just as important as that, tax classification hearing is next meeting.
Yeah, we were discussing that. That's a fun one.
Warm you up for that one.
There we go, good. Tree lighting?
So it sounds like that's on the...
I mean, lights.
That's coming from the tree lighting.
Do you have a reason for an abatement? There are very strict dates, and it's what, January?
What is it? It's typically the month of January, depending on the tax position.
And if you miss the date, you've missed.
The date.
Yeah. So for people who sometimes will get the calls after, and that's pretty tough, so if you have a concern, something's not right, just make sure you take care of it in January.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Any other communications or announcements? No. Moving on to consent items.
Yes, as we mentioned, see if we can peel back the sort of discussion here a little bit. If you remember, two town meetings ago, the town meeting approved a recommendation by myself and the board that we move a million dollars into the other post-employment benefits trust fund. It was a stabilization fund established and approved with the support of the finance committee. Last town meeting, the recommendation was for $500,000 to be moved from the health insurance trust fund into a true OPEB trust fund, and the goal at that time was to invest those funds with the Commonwealth. The explanation for moving from a stabilization fund to the trust fund was the benefit of being able to earn investment interest or investment capital appreciation, sort of grow the $500,000 where the stabilization fund really just gets invested and earns interest only and grows much slower. So town meeting, the board supported that initiative, as did the finance committee and ultimately town meeting. So this provides the authorization for the town treasurer to move those $500,000 into an investment agreement with the state retiree benefits trust, and then move forward from there. Probably a recommendation at this town meeting, my recommendation will be between a half-a-million and a million dollars, again, from the health insurance trust into this trust fund, but we first need to establish a trust. It should be noted that under statute, in order to establish an account on behalf of the town with the state, you need to invest a minimum of a half-million dollars, so that was part of the reason we used that figure last time at town meeting. So this is good news.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'll move that the Board of Selectmen, in accordance with the provisions of Chapter 32b, Section 20 of Massachusetts General Law, as amended by Chapter 68, Section 57 of the Acts of 2011, designate the town treasurer-collector to serve as custodian of the town of North Antivir's OPEB trust fund, and that the treasurer of the town of North Antivir be authorized to execute and deliver the investment agreement with state retiree benefits trust, known as SRBT, in substantially the form presented to this meeting and attached here to sign checks and wire OPEB fund trusts, trust funds, to SRBT or to the Pension Reserves Investment Trust, PRI-T, or as it may otherwise be directed by SRBT, and to make withdrawals and investments and enter into such agreements and deliver such certifications and other documents as SRBT or the Pension Reserves Investment Management Board may direct, and that the sum of 500,000 be appropriated as the initial investment into the SRBT fund.
Peter?
You would have just said, so moved, right?
I would have said moved, yes, I would.
That's why they write it.
Moved as written.
Do you have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Moving on to an acceptance of a donation of a freezer.
Question. Question. Why, why are they asking for our permission to do this?
And all donations must be accepted by the Board of Selectmen.
Oh, yeah, we accept all donations. Dick just explained that to the kids in front of us.
In the past, they just got it, now they're asking.
Well, it's good to know that we're now in compliance, because all donations made to...
You're still not in compliance, trust me.
We are.
All donations made to any municipality must be accepted by the jurisdictional authority. So if it's a town department, it must be the Board of Selectmen. If it's a donation to the schools, it must be the school committee.
So to make a flat thing out there, it wasn't accepted by us.
Today's a new day, Don.
Yeah, new day, okay.
We're peeling the onion and moving forward.
Don?
Just a question. It comes from the Friends of the Singers. I'm going to have to abstain on this, because I know what's going on.
Do you have any, well, no.
Oh.
Thank you. Do it. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have appointments.
So we have two very fine individuals who are interested in joining two town boards that sat down with Rosemary and myself and the town manager. The first one is a gentleman named Paul Blin. Paul was directed to us by associates that he knows on the cable TV advisory committee, so he's had the opportunity to really pick their brains about joining this group, and as they're heading into contract negotiations, he brings a set of skills as a chemical engineer and possessing an MBA that we think he would be a good fit, and I think I speak for all three of us when I say that, you know, he comes highly recommended by us. Do we want to?
With approval of Paul Blin to the cable TV advisory committee?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second one we have is Kevin Driscoll to the Youth and Recreation Council. Again, we are very fortunate to have such great volunteers step up. He has children in the community and very enthusiastic about this position, and I think he will be a great asset to the board. So I would move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And as I always say, thank you, thank you, because without the volunteers, this community would grind to a screeching halt. So thank you. Okay, now we move into voting, looking at and voting on the timeline for our appointments of our police and fire chief.
So Madam Chairman, as you were aware, the police and fire chief are due to retire in June of 2016. You've asked that we place on the agenda discussion to provide me some direction relative to the process. We know, and I think I identified at the last meeting, town bylaw requires an assessment center before either a police or fire chief can be appointed. We'll be in the process of developing the request for proposals for an assessment, an assessing firm to come in and do those assessments. What would be helpful is any further instructions, a deadline that the board, you know, decides upon relative to an appointment date, or any other processes in addition to the assessment center.
Now, are both chiefs, I thought the fire chief was leaving a little bit earlier.
Yes, the fire chief is retiring at the end of March, the police chief the end of June. Originally, it was both June, and Chief Melnikus has decided to retire some months early.
At the end of those months?
Yes, and he was, Chief Melnikus was originally June 7th, and Chief Gallagher was June 30th, and now Chief Melnikus is, there's a day in March, I've now forgotten it.
16th.
16th?
Is that what we're talking about?
Appreciate that. Somewhere in the, in the middle of March.
So what's the earliest we would need to start the fire chief search in order for it to happen?
By the 16th.
The earliest?
You could really want a little earlier. You don't want him out, you don't want him out, and one guy in.
I would like to see like a month overlap or something, at least some...
Start on both.
At least, I'm leaning towards Don doing both of them, early in the year and getting it done.
I could easily do, easily do the assessment centers. It wouldn't be in the same day, but I could do the assessment centers in January. The results are pretty quick, two to three weeks.
So what are we looking at, the end of February for these appointments? Is that what we're talking about? Does that make sense?
That seems like a long time for two, for that overlap, to me. It seems like we've got, you know, five months of overlap. That seems like a long time for effectively two people to be in charge, and I'm specifically talking about the, I mean, February is great for the fire, were you talking about the fire chief or the police chief? I'm sorry. Were you talking about...
I was just talking in general.
In general? I mean, February sounds right for the fire chief, since the, that gives, I think, that one-month overlap, but I think February for the police chief, that seems like a long time to have two people who are effectively in charge, in my opinion.
So what would you suggest for police?
I would say another month.
So March?
Well, what's typically the timeline, Mr. Town Manager, of how long there's overlap between executives, because these are the only two executives that we appoint besides you. So we don't appoint, like, what's the typical overlap schedule that you see professionally?
You know me not to be a coy person. I'm not sure typical is, I'm not sure there's typical, right? So there can be no overlap. An example would be my last appointment when someone left and you didn't have the time, and there can be, you know, an overlap of some period.
What was the overlap between Chief Stanley and Chief Gallagher?
It wasn't. He never left. It wasn't.
Oh, really?
He had already departed.
He had already departed.
That's right.
That's not uncommon, because typically, sometimes you're not aware.
Right, he wasn't even there, right.
We're pretty far in advance in both these cases. That isn't always as common, so the incumbents have given us substantial notice.
Same way as our fire chief, the last two, there was no overlap.
So we're in a pretty luxurious position when we have time to make these decisions, but I would just be concerned with, since the police chief is going on until the end of June, that's midsummer, and then if we're making an appointment in February, that's a long time to have, I think, a dual chief role, because obviously you're going to have an incumbent, and you're going to have an in-going and an outgoing.
And then on the flip side of that, I think it gives clarity to the department itself as to what's going next.
Yeah, but I think you can do that with a month. We want to do five months. Five months just seems excessive to me.
Anything after election is going to cause a problem.
Well...
Why?
About that one. Just tell you, anytime after election, it becomes political then.
It's a valid point, actually. Actually, you could put it that way. Well, I think where we know we have a fire chief leaving in March, that's pretty simple.
So we could stagger it in that instance, right? Unless do we, has there been any indication? Because originally, the fire chief you said was going to leave in June, and he pushed it up. Is there any indication that the police chief is thinking of doing the same thing?
No.
I don't know what went into the fire chief's decision.
No, there's no indication.
Would the assessment centers, I mean, do they have to be done at the same time?
No, they won't be done at the same time.
They won't be done at the same time.
They could be done on the same week, but they won't be done the same day. They'll be done at different times.
All right, to switch, to switch gears, and while we marinate on timing, I have other questions.
Marinate, I like it.
While we marinate on timing, I have other questions that we can move to in between. So this is from Article 41. Can you clarify that the town manager shall choose an individual or firm qualified by experience and knowledge to conduct the assessment center, and shall also appoint the interviewing panel, which shall, at a minimum, have two chiefs from the appropriate police or fire disciplines to serve on the panel. The recommendations of the interviewing panel shall be forwarded to the Board of Selectmen for their consideration in making the appointment.
Yes.
That is the operative words that I'm curious with. For their consideration. That does not take away our opportunity to hold public interviews.
No, not at all.
Okay.
Yeah, is that what I was...
They're definitely, right, the interpretation of that is that you could, it's not, not going to happen that way, but you could technically create a panel, which was not with the help of a professional firm. We will hire a professional firm, issue an RFP, and that specification of having people of certain experience will be in the RFP to make sure that those folks, but that'll all be run by, you know, an independent company who specializes in doing the assessment of, in scoring the assessment of public safety chiefs.
As you've seen in the past.
Just exactly as you've seen in the past. I will assume, unless hearing to the contrary, but that's on you folks, that you will do an interview at a selectmen's meeting, which has been the practice in the past. Again, that's up to you folks. You just need to let Laurie and I know what date that would be, but obviously it would be after the assessment, and then you can choose either in that particular evening or at a date later than the meeting in which you interview them to make the vote of chief, and that vote must be a simple majority of a quorum.
Okay.
Process isn't overly complicated, frankly, but...
No, no, no. It was just clarification.
You're getting them, and you can interview away. And you could do that at a separate meeting.
Well, I think that's important for the public.
Yes, absolutely.
So there's an assessment center and this panel?
Yes.
No, panel, no, no, the word panel, I'm a little hung up on. There's the assessment center and the Board of Selectmen. The panel is the assessment center.
So the panel is the assessment, okay.
Yes. The panel, there's the assessment center and then the Board of Selectmen, so...
Because the assessment center generally holds past retired and chiefs.
There's everybody from, folks who have served in management, in a police chief, there might be two retired chiefs, you know, pretty standard setup of people with experience, past experience in the role, yeah.
And what's our latitude for the process that we go through? I mean, can we...
As much as you want.
Can we conduct interviews with the candidates?
We will, public.
Yes, as we just talked about.
Oh, yeah, I know that, but I mean, can we also conduct interviews with other people too? I mean, is there other, you know...
What, you mean for lack of...
Well, let's say we want to get the incumbent chiefs in here and get, and talk to them about it. Can we do that? Can we talk to members of the community that might want to have some input? I mean, is there a process that we have?
Other than what's prescribed here, there, you'd have to define all of the examples you have, but there is no reason you can't add to this. I would define this as the minimum requirement.
I'm confused, though. Explain what you mean. You want people to line up and come in and talk to us in public on who they want?
Maybe there's specific people that we want to talk to.
Wouldn't you conduct that anyhow, as in your role as a selectman? I'm asking you, are you looking to like have people come in?
I mean...
I'm super uncomfortable with that, in all honesty. I'm not going to line people up in the hallway and have a popularity war or something like that. Well, that's what I'm asking, that's what I mean. What do you mean?
Well, I'm just saying, I'm asking the process. I'm not saying specifically that that's what I'd want to do. I'm asking what the latitude is in the process. If we so choose to do that, could we? So that's all.
In the past, however, whenever we ask questions, we usually decide as a committee, whether it be the town manager or whatever, that to have certain questions so that they're not disadvantages...
So the standard set...
Yeah, exactly. So that would make it a little bit more difficult. Say you have...say, for example, you have the superintendent of schools in. I'm just saying that as an example. You know, it's...or somebody who's worked with someone in particular. It could really get awkward.
Right, well, I mean, I haven't been...
It's a...no, it's interesting.
You weren't on the board the last time.
I wonder what the process is. I'm just asking for clarification on what's allowable and what isn't.
So the last process was, well, I've been on the board for both the sitting, the current chiefs. And we went through the assessment. All the assessment information was made public and given to us. And then we had agreed upon questions, I believe.
Yeah.
And had, I think it was three or four candidates, and each of them had an opportunity to answer those questions before us, if I recall. Am I...right?
That's correct.
I believe so. And then with chief, I was not here for Chief Martino, but I was here for current Chief Melnikas, and it was the same process.
And I think we kept the other candidates in another room.
Yes, we did. So they weren't in together.
They weren't in together, so they didn't hear the question and have time to prepare for it. So, for example, you'd have the chiefs here, and then the other one might have to wait in the town manager's office until they're called.
Right, until they were called.
So that it's only fair.
Makes sense.
The last one in is well-prepared if you don't do it that way.
I wasn't following. Like, I didn't know what you meant.
I'm just asking for clarification on the process.
Right, if you...I mean, are you looking to do something along those lines?
I don't know. I'm just trying to understand what is allowable and what isn't. It sounds like, you know, it is allowable, but it may be not the best process. But I'm just trying to get, you know, opening them to do it, that's all. Just seeing what...just kicking around what is available. What, I mean, like I said, I haven't been through this before. I'm new to it. Phil's new to it, too. We haven't been on one of these, you know...
Would you hire someone in your professional world in that manner?
What, call people for references? Sure.
No, references. I'm not talking about references. I'm talking about calling people for references. Would you have those references?
Come in?
Come in before you in a public manner?
No, because I'm not in a public company. This is a public...we're a public forum. I'm not a public...my company's not public in the way that we don't...we have to have open meetings a lot.
I see Dick's point, but I could definitely...the awkwardness, I think it's just not...yeah, I don't know that I would be comfortable asking people in the community or hoping people in the community came out looking for...I think that could be quite wild.
Yeah, it'd be extremely uncomfortable.
Yeah, I've known Jimmy since he was 10 years old, kind of thing. It'd be kind of awkward.
Or worse, I mean, you have somebody...I mean, we have people from the law enforcement background. You have some disgruntled person come in and say something completely out of line.
Didn't even think of it.
Because how would you...
That'd be bad.
That's where I'm thinking of, because I know that...I know we've received calls. I mean, I recently received a phone call, not about a specific police chief, but about somebody complaining about a police officer that I know was a little bit wild. So, I mean, I would be very nervous about having a public...
Right, how would you control that?
Yeah.
In the sense of like, how would you...who would you keep on the list? Who would you keep off?
Well, that's why I'm asking. I'm not saying...
Yeah, that's interesting, yeah.
I'm not saying it's what the, you know, what I'm suggesting to do. I'm just asking questions about the process.
What's the process to come? Like hypothetically, you know, you have this panel or the assessment center. Could we say, well, whatever we want to appoint on as police chief? I mean, is that...I mean, is that the latitude that we have as a board?
I think so.
Or do we have to...
Well, the assessment center...
Adhere to whoever applies to the assessment center? I'm not saying...like, that's not...sorry, Don, that's not happening. At least, sorry.
Technically, could you go off the...
Off the reservation?
I'm just curious about what our...just in general, what our authority is.
Not Don, of course not. Not Don, but there are...you have...it's a difficult hypothetical without narrowing it beyond Mr. Stewart. I think you're going to...we're going to know the group of candidates. We're going to put out a solicitation essence, an internal posting of people that are interested. Those are the people that are going to take the assessment. And in turn, the bylaw is pretty clear that the assessment is the first step to a process, right? So if you didn't participate in that step...
You can't.
Then intuitively, it doesn't say you're precluded, but intuitively, that's the person...
So you said we're going to put it internally, but we're not going to put it...like, there's not going to be the option for people, let's say that the police chief in box is applying for this job. That's not going to be an option.
Well, I would...
So if that's the case, then...
That's our decision.
So then that actually...
As long as we follow the bylaw.
This brings us full circle to timing. So again, hypothetically, we have a sergeant that applies for this position, and they end up getting the position. They could potentially be in the department as a sergeant for four to five months, right? If we select a sergeant. And so then you have a sergeant who's technically the next chief, but then we're going back to that original concern about having a new chief.
I would want a sergeant to have five months of training under the chief, for sure.
And actually, I was thinking that we should perhaps even look into the FBI Leadership Academy, considering all the problems that we're facing now, especially it's timely in the news. We're facing opiate problems, we're facing terrorist problems, all kinds of things. And I think it's something to consider.
When is that held?
I do not know.
Well, it was an application process, and I guarantee...I think we generally agree that given any new chief, and the process here has been internal promotion, which is fine, that there'd be an expectation for professional development like there would be on almost every position. That's one of the options. We have a pretty experienced group, but certainly same thing with fire chief. We'd be looking for opportunities to expand professional development.
I just don't know what one would be for.
Yeah.
For fire chief, the...well, the other thing, too, and this is sort of an uncomfortable question, but oftentimes when we have people from town who've worked in town for a very long time, there is also a lot of vacation and other times that are accumulated. We...so their date is this date, but...
I would...you should expect that Chief Gallagher will be here very close to the date he's identified. Could it be earlier as a function of burning some vacation time and those kind of things? Yes.
And I'm not begrudging them, then. I'm just stating a fact of concern that...
No, no, I just... I just don't want to create an uncertainty. There'll be...there's some movement there around things like vacation time, but I don't want to...I think we should, generally speaking, you should work closely off the June 30th date if you...could it possibly be the 15th or at some point? Of course.
Well, I was actually referring to vacation time in between, and the final date is the date, but that's what I'm saying, that...
It could be.
And I'm not speaking about...
Sure.
Either one of them, frankly, so...
Going to the...we talked about the police chief. Going back to the fire chief, because he's leaving on the 16th...
Yes.
I think it was the 16th.
I trust you.
What's...can you lay out that specific timeline, what we have to...what you would recommend for that specific position? Because it sounds like no matter what we decide for the police chief, the fire chief one is coming up. And so what should we...because I mean, I mean this because Dick and I really are...this is the first time either of us have been through this.
Oh, without looking...
And I want to...
Yeah, sorry.
I don't want to miss a step in this process because we are, like you said, it's tough times. I mean, the OBI issue in particular. We have two...we have two public safety heads that will be...that will be brand-new this year, so...
I think it is somewhere around...and what...do we have the meeting scheduled again? What are the meetings in February, Laurie? I apologize, I just left that off the screen.
The 22nd.
And what's the April meeting? Oh, sorry, I mean, what's the March meeting?
7th and 23rd.
Okay, so I would say the 22nd meeting of...the meeting of February 22nd, working off a March 16th date for an appointment of a fire chief would be more than acceptable. All the people that are likely candidates, unless you were to look outside, are folks with a substantial amount of experience in the department. I don't see an issue with transitioning on either department, you know, that there's an issue with transitioning without the benefit of the incumbent, although the incumbents certainly can be made available for a period of time. But anyway, so I would say the 22nd. It could be the 8th, if you wanted a longer...we would complete assessments in mid-January that would put you in a position where you could interview either at the February 8th meeting or depending upon how long you...
A separate meeting.
Yeah, or a separate meeting. Either one. I'm not suggesting one over another, but last meeting, last time it was done at a regularly scheduled meeting, but either one, somewhere around that date, made the appointment either at the 8th or at the 22nd or called a special meeting for the purpose of appointment, whatever. But in that range would be satisfactory. Yeah.
And we feel like this will be an appropriate enough time that the person will be able to hit the ground running?
In my opinion, yes.
With enough overlap?
In my opinion. That's up to the board to decide, in my opinion.
In particular, if we choose to keep the posting in-house only.
Right, of course.
For the...
I'm only working off that assumption, so someone would have to...for police and fire, I'm making that assumption.
So is that part of the process? So the criteria is part of the process also, as we have to draft that criteria as well?
Well, it's you choose if you're going to go outside or stay in-house.
You just give me direction.
But also the amount of experience at...
No, it's just simply direction.
So when do we give you that?
We don't draft the criteria.
Did we give the formally to you, Andrew?
The assessment center does.
I think we'll forget to that point if you voted on a draft.
No, I understand what you mean. I was saying the criteria for someone to apply for the job.
No, we don't draft that. We...no, we strictly only...
I would interpret the bylaw as requiring an assessment. The assessment is, in essence, going to interpret the skills of the incumbents relative to their ability and qualifications to do the job, and then report that back to the board in terms of a result. It's not, for instance, like filling my role, where you may define in a very specific way the number of years at the level of the degree.
So an officer that just got on last year can apply for the job if they so choose and go to the assessment center?
What the bylaw contemplates when moving the positions from civil service and instructionally it is, is that the town manager would construct an assessment center consistent with professional standards. That, with no disrespect, because I was in here when it was written, that that was handed, in essence, to the town manager to construct a independent assessment and come back to the board with the results of that assessment to eliminate the over-management of the selection process. So what you'll get back is, here are the people that applied. We went through a professional assessment, went through the standards and criteria that happened throughout the Commonwealth and throughout the country in terms of assessing these roles. You'll get the numeric evaluation or score associated with each of those folks. Then you'll conduct at least an interview, and then you have to tell me what else is involved in the process, if anything, and then... But if not, I'll negotiate a contract.
What I found helpful when we...was that I didn't have the luxury of having a police chief prior...leave prior, but I did pull the minutes from when Chief Dolan retired and read that process. And actually, I think I sat with Ray and had Ray kind of walk through the whole process as to how it went down when Chief Martino came on board. And it was really kind of super helpful to me in particular, because I had...we hadn't seen any chains of chiefs in 25-plus years. So it was...we really didn't know what to do. I mean, we don't turn over chiefs really...lately, we have a little bit more, but prior to that, we didn't. That was very helpful, the minutes and whatnot. But I think that we...that's where actually even where I get a little...is...so the assessment center is basically the criteria. I mean, our main or our...the only thing the board, and I don't know if that's formal vote or not, is whether we keep this in in-house promotion or we look outside. I mean, and then...and then I don't recall when we did the last police chief and fire chief in regards to the questions. Were those...I can't remember if those were provided to us from Kathy Darby with our additional input, or was Kathy Darby even here? I don't think so, right? She wasn't even here? Or did the assessment center...I forget how those came about. That's one thing I don't...
I mean, that's your discretion.
I would like to see everybody have input on that, you know what I mean? Where it's not...
You can circulate questions.
If we do it in that manner, then everybody should be able to have...
Yeah, you can circulate questions. You could ask for...again, these are just suggestions. You can ask questions from the public, that again, you...
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Work your way through and decide, here's the list of questions. Ultimately, you should decide on a list of questions, so there's a standardization to the questions, right? So everybody feels like they're getting the same questions. How you arrive at those questions and how many you arrive at, and whether you want to do it in a regularly scheduled meeting or separately scheduled meeting, that's all within the board's purview.
What...how do we...how would we work through that as a board, where we would kind of, in essence, really be kind of voting on questions or not? And how would we work through that?
It's a great question. So what we can do is if you give me some direction of how you want to generate the questions, in other words, whether they're going to be internally generated, whether you want me to work with whoever we select, for instance, as the assessment company to give some standard questions, whether you generate questions on your own, you'd circulate all to the spurs laugh, and then I'd come back to the board with a list of questions. You can review those questions and say, yes, these are the questions we're interested in. That's certainly one method to do it. Or it could be a little less formal than that. You have to be aware of the fact that if you're going to approve questions at a public meeting, those questions then become public.
Part of the record.
Part of the record, and part of the record for any candidate interested in knowing what the questions are. But that's your choice.
They have to know what the questions are before?
They do not. They would if it's public, and I would struggle with arguing these executive sessions.
Doesn't mean every question will be answered. And not every question will be asked.
That'd be a reach.
I was going to say, the last time what happened was the chair and another selectman sat down with my seat and worked out the questions. So that there was no quorum, so...and then the questions were distributed to the selectmen to ask.
Right. Yeah, I think transparency, that might be complicated, but that's one method to do.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm super comfortable with that method, though. I feel like it's illusionary as opposed to being illusionary.
Ray and I could sit and start with beginning a series of questions, again, circulated to the board. The board can...
That would be helpful.
That we can...Ray and I can certainly work toward a set of questions that would...I'll sit with Kathy, too, as it relates to human resource-related stuff, but I think...
And I think with having Kathy, that'll be even...
Yeah.
I mean, there has to be...
So we can do that.
The assessment centers, I do have to say, are...they generate an incredible amount, a wealth of knowledge in regards to the candidates. But they're one piece of the pie.
Yeah. So we could, as it relates to questions, come up with a series of questions. In essence, we would be generating the questions. We could circulate them to you individually, unless you were objecting to the questions, then those would be the questions, so...
And selection can...
Edit them, comment them.
Edit them, comment them, send in their own.
There's no pride in ownership.
I think questions coming out of like an assessment board is...but I know, Ray, you've sat on many of them, so you've got that background, too. I don't know, Andrew, if you've sat on...
Yes.
You have, too, so you've got the background, too. So I think certainly, I mean, those questions, I think, would be of interest to me because I wouldn't know, you know, specifically what to ask a police chief. I mean, I have some ideas, but I think there's questions that I wouldn't even think about that would be asked.
Have you seen the assessments of the last...
No, but I've looked at them.
Yeah, I was going to say, maybe you could...oh, no, maybe not. No, we can't do that. Never mind, no, never mind, never mind. Blank ones? Do you have blank ones? No.
It's not going to...I think they would be difficult to necessarily say that that's...so I would think of the assessments as...I'm going to struggle with the word, but applying practical examples to what the person would do in that situation, where traditional interview questions by a board or in another interview setting would be a somewhat different example. So the assessment centers are role-playing. Here's the circumstance, that's why chiefs and others, management folks, sit in it. They create an environment where a person has to make decisions as close to the real environment as is possible, given the circumstances. And so normally, the interview questions would be a little different, because you can't simulate that...you know, you're asking an interview question in a public meeting. You can't quite simulate the interaction with the public or response to it.
We asked questions such as, are you going to be three and done? I mean, we were right out there.
That's a legitimate question.
Are you going to be three and done? Because that's...you know what I mean? Like, we...they were off kind of the reservation type of questions, too.
That's a normal question. That's a normal question.
But I think that's a fair question, yeah.
Dawn asked me if I participated in the Swamscott poll, it'd be a plunge. That's the question he asked me.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
And when I answered no, I wasn't sure what was gonna happen.
That was your one, that was your one question. That was it.
So, from us this evening, you need?
I need a date. I don't need a date. I need a date by which you would like to make the appointment of the fire chief.
Uh-huh.
And I can work you back to a timeline to make a vote. I would assume that vote will take place in pencil on February 22nd.
Okay.
Okay? Because that's likely. And we would work the assessment to make sure you got the information back and be able to generate questions so that you could either interview and vote on the 22nd, but in any case, vote on the 22nd. And then you would decide if you wanted to interview on the 8th or an alternative date. That's fire chief.
So a motion would be somewhere along the lines of move that the board of select and set a timeline to complete, and I'm not making it, I'm just, uh, selection process for the fire chief positioned by February 22nd, 16. Okay.
That'd be sufficient.
And that would be, okay, and that would be.
And the candidate pool be restricted to?
Oh, and, and that's what it's candidate.
Current members of, of the north end of.
Well, do we want to back that up a bit and give them a full month overlap? Or is that not?
I, I've previously expressed my opinion on this. That's up to you. I'm fine with the 22nd, but that's a board decision.
Now, Chair, I would move, the town manager just said for the fire chief, and I would move March 25th for the police chief.
Do I have?
So we're putting them both together?
No, they're two different.
February 22nd, March 25th.
So, no, I want to be clear, that's a single motion, though, for both, and we're not scheduling them separately? And we're not doing two separate motions for each schedule?
Well, I'll, I'll divide them then, so I'll make the first motion for the.
We need to know, do candidate pool in-house or out-house? Out-house. Out-of-house. I didn't go out, right?
Well, I'd be in favor of in-house.
Okay. Me, too.
So this is for the fire chief?
Fire chief.
March 22nd, 2016.
February 22nd.
I'm sorry, February 22nd.
February 22nd, yeah.
2016.
And it include a public interview?
To include a public interview? And the candidate pool be in-house only?
Um, is that? I, I second that fire chief one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll make the next motion for March 25th for the police chief.
I am, I want to speak, I mean, we just approved, we could have pushed up the fire chief so that we gave more overlap than we didn't. I don't see the rationale for why we're rushing four months ahead of time to appoint, to designate a police chief. I don't know why we wouldn't just push that up until May, still give the police chief eight weeks to overlap current one.
Well, there's a few things, this town meeting, and so that's a lot of business with town meeting that needs to be done, and it also gives us time, if we so choose, as I mentioned previous, if we wanted to have our new chief engage in some sort of leadership training, or, which I think could be very important, it gives us the option.
What kind of leadership training?
Well, the, the FBI has a leadership academy.
I'm not interested in there's a application process for that.
They actually have one to four-year waiting lists.
Oh, well, he didn't say that.
It's irrelevant, though. I mean, that leadership, it's a one to four-year waitlist. I mean, it's not irrelevant, but it's not gonna happen before June 30th.
I did not know that it was one to four years.
I, I, I agree with Phil. I think that's a huge overlap to have two leaders in place. I think we have, we're talking about less than three weeks for the fire chief and then three or four months for the police chief to be in an overlap position. And I understand the town meeting aspect of it, but we, I mean, we've worked other issues around town meeting as well. It's not, I mean, that's what we do.
We throw a brand-new selectmen in the middle of town meeting. Every year, at least, well, not necessarily every year, but I was thrown in.
Every year.
Four weeks ahead of time.
And it's every end of selectmen generally for the Osburg. At least your first year.
Um, you're right. I mean, so your first year, you're four weeks into it. I mean, I just don't see the ration, I, I'm not understanding the rush to get somebody identified for four months in advance when we wouldn't harm our community by doing it eight weeks in advance. I mean, there's no, there's no harm, it's still eight weeks longer than our prior police chief had when he was brought on board, when, well, you didn't participate in that vote, but Dawn and Tracy participated in that vote. And, I mean, we've reappointed him, we think, I mean, I, I've worked with him, I think he's done a great job, I don't see any lag time. Um, I don't see that there was a lag time or that, you know, he had to actually get on the job training. I think that he did a good job, at least still we're giving this next chief eight weeks. I see that it's more conflict in the police department if we have two heads there at the same time for four months.
I actually see it as possibly less conflict to get it, to, for, for rank and file to know who the next leader is. And I think, I think, I think knowing so far in advance that a chief is leading it, it, there can be conflict, so it's, it's both sides. I, I see both sides to this, but I think that, you know, with a chief leaving with this much notice, and we are choosing to, I think we're choosing to keep this appointment in-house.
Yeah.
That, that while, um, it could, it could quell some conflict so that future, the future direction, or however I want to, I'm not quite sure how to put it, is, is the, put to bed.
So let's say, let's go with the hypothetical I listed before, let's entertain this scenario where a sergeant applies for this position, and we decide that sergeant is the most qualified. That sergeant is not the top-ranking person beneath the chief. And so then you have a sergeant who, at the same time that he's police chief, he's going to be the police chief in four months.
He's not police chief, he's.
He's going to be police chief in four months.
And if he's a sergeant.
Answering to lieutenant.
Right, that is fantastic. He needs five months of leadership training, so.
But then there's, there's, who, where, where is the authority coming from? I think, again, I, I see.
It's a paramilitary organization, that they follow the.
That's right.
The rank. I mean, I would, that would be truly troubling if we had the, the police chief and people aren't following the directive of their chief.
But if that's true, then there's no problems then currently right now. We don't, we're, we're talking about solving a problem, but then at the same time.
No, 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 I'm not saying solve a problem. No one used the word problem. No, I don't, didn't hear anybody.
But I think you made the point that, that some of the probable candidates of the police department are going to be, you know, whether they be sergeants or whether they be lieutenants, all of those are pretty important positions, and so you're gonna have a vacuum, you're gonna lose the chief, and then you're gonna have whomever it is that made the, the grade, that's another position that's empty, so that's.
So it does create somewhat of a chain reaction.
It's a little bit different than the fire department.
Because you, you, I mean, the hope is that we're going to see command staff change. We're keeping it in-house, so we're, you know, someone from rank, you would assume, will move up, and someone from another rank will move up, and.
Who will need time to train into those positions.
Who will need time to train as well, so, you know.
But our department has done that before and done it with success. It sounds like this is a typical problem that, or not a problem, typical.
We've managed it with no time, I think.
Yeah.
I just think that the timeframe between March and June is just a, a long time to have two leaders in place. I mean, I just look in, in the corporate world, you know, we don't do that. We don't assign, or one CEO going out and then put another one in six months earlier. It's, it's not done. It's, it's, there's just, there needs to be that clear leadership chain and that clear directive coming from the leader.
Well, I do agree with Rosemary that it's a paramilitary organization, and if they can't report to their commanding officers, then we have a problem. Then, then we do have a problem.
Well, I don't think it's a rewarding thing. It's still just a, a division of power there. It's, it's still like, who do we, who, who do we pay more respect to? The outgoing fire, police chief or the incoming one? And, you know, I, I think it.
Who do you pay more respe, yeah, I don't, I disagree with that. They're both, it's a paramilitary organization.
So, can I use an example?
And if their rank and file is not showing the appropriate respect to the, the chief of police and the, the soon-to-be chief of police who may be a sergeant at the time, then there's a problem in the, then I will use the word problem, then there's a problem in the department.
But there's, there's still that, I mean, that's just business in general, though. I know it's a paramilitary organization, it's our police force, but I don't, I guess I'm not understanding the, the rush to do this when we just had the option to push up the fire chief sooner than we did and we didn't.
I would do the fire chief next week. I'd, I'd do it next week and have overlap of three months.
But, yeah, we just selected, we selected the 22nd, and.
Well, I don't make motions, but I, I would be happy to do it months prior.
But we, we just approved that. I'm just saying, though, that we don't have any, there's no concern, there's no qualms that, you know, maybe three weeks isn't enough time. I mean, I think that this is, I think we're even still entertaining right now, we're not even talking about three weeks, we're talking about eight weeks, we're talking about pushing this up until May. I don't see why, or I should say, I am, I don't know what Dick is, I don't know what Dawn is, I don't, I don't know, I mean, Rosemary made the motion. I don't see the harm in pushing it up until May. I mean, I'm not, I'm not understanding why we need four months overlap, we don't do that with anything else. Again, we put our selectmen, we put our chief executive board in place the day after they're elected.
If given, if, this isn't an elected position.
No, I'm talking about us, I'm talking about us. We put us in the day after we're, we're put in, I mean, we had no overlap with our town manager.
Division director gives someone, um, a six-month retirement notice, are you waiting to hire? Or are you gonna hire someone that can shadow?
You're putting, not putting me in the middle.
I am. I'm just saying, when you see an executive director of something leave, you want as much overlap as, as possible. You see that. You see people who give six, eight, 10, a year's time notice that they will be retiring to conduct the search. What if we don't find someone within our own?
The CEO stays a year.
Yes.
Especially in purchases, that's.
This, this.
Absolutely.
I mean, but what's the.
Well, we do have a motion and a second, and we can move it, but I want everyone to have their voice.
I don't, I'm not seeing the rationale, though, that's why I'm, that's why I'm having the conversation.
I'll explain.
We're in a public meeting, explain it to us now. Okay, I'm sorry. Didn't realize that, we'll, we'll speak afterwards.
But what is your objection to having it further out? I mean, I've heard the reasons why you want it in, I mean, because you look, and you've heard our reasons why we, you know, we kill it, too much is too much. What is the, what is your objection to? I mean, because we've, we've already said, the fire chief, we're given less than a month, but.
I don't necessarily agree with that. I don't agree with that. I think the fire chief should have a whole bunch more time. So, that, I, I, I think that any training and direction you can get from the person that you, you will be filling the position, the better. So I don't actually, I mean, I, I would like to see more with the fire chief.
The reason.
You know what I mean?
But you didn't say that. I mean, I didn't, this is the first time I've heard you say that.
Well, well, it's the first time you've asked me, and I don't make the most shit, so.
But we just.
You know, and you're right, I should have, well, but three weeks is not, no, I, I, I would have pushed it up.
So why didn't you vote against the motion?
Um, because it's not the end of the.
The chairman can also count the votes and then just.
Right.
Make her, make her.
I mean, I would have, I, I mean, I'm deferring to you, again, you, I mean, Rosemary, myself, and Doc, and Dick have never participated in this chief, and I, well, we've never done the police chief, that was a fire chief vote. Again, Dick and I, though, have never done that. I mean, I'm, I've picked your brain a thousand times about this. I would defer to you, if you think that it needs to take months to pick someone and give them that.
I've got nothing.
That's what I, that's what I said.
I think that we.
But Dick and I have never participated.
One was dead on.
What do you mean?
As far as the assessment, just almost the same.
No, I'm talking about timing, though.
Timing, yes.
I mean, we've, we've settled, we've settled on the assessment.
When will you look into putting a police chief in position?
Oh, no, we said, we settled, we haven't settled on the police assessment yet.
Well, you don't have a choice about the assessment. The assessment will just be driven by whatever decision you ultimately make. There will be an assessment, I can, that, that I'm sure.
No, I mean, this is, I, I feel like.
When was the last time I did that, Dawn?
I don't, I don't understand the rationale of it, and I mean, frankly, and selectmen smidely, with all due respect, you just made a motion to have the appointment happen a week before you're supposed to be reelected. Why not push it up four weeks, eight weeks? So that way, it's a board that, I mean, again, I don't, I don't see why we would insert this in the middle of an election season.
Well, then do it earlier.
So as to not make it.
Why wouldn't we just, we could time the assessment, though, so it happens after.
So as not to make it political.
Well, we could time the assessment so that the assessment itself doesn't even happen until after the election, and we'd still have eight weeks.
Whether we do it before or after, it's political, there's no, there's no.
Well, I think it's less political if it's done before, or, well, yeah.
With all, with all due, Dick, if I may, with all due respect, I've had the opportunity to run your campaign, Tracy, at one point, to run your campaign, Dick, to run your campaign, Dawn, and never once, I mean this, never once in those campaigns, nor once in my campaign, did a voter just say, well, what's your feeling about the police chief or fire chief? I mean, this was never.
Because it's never been part of an election, you. It's never been this close to an election, that's why.
But if we push it, if we push it up to May, then it's not, I mean, it's two months away anyways.
Absolutely, it becomes a full-blown election, it becomes a full-blown political issue during the election. I absolutely think so.
If we push the assessment off until after the election, then that's, we don't even start the process until after the election.
Right, and then I think it becomes part of the process.
Well, people, you necessarily know.
Who the applicants are, who's in the running, who's what the scores are. We won't, we will not even start at the process.
What? So you'll know a couple, but you won't know more, that doesn't mean the.
No, I, and not only that, I mean, I can't imagine people appreciating that we're putting, we're pushing up this vote a week before an election instead of waiting until weeks after an election. I mean, I don't see, I don't, again, I, I think, I shouldn't say the onus, because I guess it's, it's a discussion, but, I mean, support the rationale for why eight weeks isn't accommodating. I, I mean, I, I think it's fair to put this information out there and have this be part of the discussion anyways. I mean, we can, obviously, it's part of this discussion right now. I mean, why wouldn't?
Put it out where, I'm not following that, what do you mean?
I think it's fair to have us discuss why we wouldn't want it to be eight weeks.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I think that we made it pretty clear that whoever the police chief's position is, if it's in-house, you're going to have two major jobs where there are going to be job changes.
Right.
Yes.
Major, some of the most probably, I mean, public safety.
Command staff, the command staff.
Let me finish.
Chain reaction.
But we've already done that.
But this should be, it's a paramilitary organization.
But no, I'm talking about, I, I thought you were referring to police.
But it gives.
But Tracy and, Tracy and Dawn have already participated in the vote, where they've appointed a police chief who was an existing lieutenant, so they had to appoint two new replacements in that process, too, and there was no overlap, period.
Because we couldn't have one.
But, and we succeeded, we were successful.
Ideally, it would have been nice to have had one, but ideally.
And that's what we're advocating, but I think we're advocating a shorter.
Well, we're, no, I think.
All of us are advocating a, a, an overlap.
Right, an overlap.
But, I mean, I think there's a difference between two months and four months. I mean, four months does, I mean, four months is excessive. I think that that's excessive. I don't know the rationale for why we would have there be that overlap, unless Chief Gallagher was planning on leaving earlier. I mean, that was the case with Chief Malika, that's why we pushed this up.
Well, I think it would also, it, it, with town meeting, but it allows the person to actually go through that entire process, including the budget, including the presentation, and working with FinCom, and, and working through the, the entire process that leads us to town, town meeting. I mean, for me, I, I do look at it as, regardless of who ends up chief, I want that person to know exactly, you know, what the processes are and what brings us out to town meeting, and, and working under the, the current chief now to get there, and working closely with Andrew to get there, um, you know, to me, it's on-the-job training. I, I don't think the, the, you know, a sergeant has any clue how to do the budget at the moment. I just don't.
But by March 22nd, though, that's gonna be all done. That's, that's all in the bag by March 22nd, right? I mean, we've, we've got that all wrapped up by then, pretty much.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry, don't.
Pretty much, no, yeah.
So then that's, so then if actually not, that's not, I mean, that's not part of it, then. I hope that they all participate, I don't know what goes into this. I mean, again, this, I've never been through this before, I don't know how we assess people.
Well, we beat this to a pulp, and so we're gonna move for a vote. We have a motion and a second on the table. All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Just so I can write it down, what was the motion? Just, I'm confused, sorry.
25th.
March 25th, in-house.
In-house.
So, is it March 21st?
21st.
I just want to make sure, I don't want to open, there was March, March 21st is the calendar date.
Well, she may have said 25th.
I just want to make sure, that's why I went back.
She didn't say 25th.
It is, frankly, it's honor before. It doesn't have to be that day exactly.
Okay, that's, I, I just-
But-
I just wanna make sure.
Same with the other one, I would assume.
Honor before the 22nd.
So, appointment by, honor before the 25th. The meeting would be the 21st, so that's likely the day. Okay.
Before, great. In-house, right? We all agreed on that?
Yes.
You got one?
Yes.
In-house.
Yeah, so that's a demand.
All right.
So, yeah.
I don't like the tension. What's my term?
So, it would, it would likely, the interview would likely be on that position, either the 7th or the 21st. But we can clarify that as time goes on. We'll see, we, we'll be fine to do that. If we leave it on the 21st, then, then a decision has to be made the night of interviews, if the interviews were done at the 7th or between the 7th and 21st, and you can wait on that.
Okay.
But just wanna give you that heads up.
Okay. The Osgood Landing Smart Growth Overlay District Review Committee.
Yes, Madam Chairman, I, I had issued a memo to the Board of Selectmen ceasing all the land use boards, I think, pretty close, and Erica Foray looking, or encouraging the Board of Selectmen to endorse the formation of a committee that would look at the overlay district. The overlay district was first discussed, I'll get some of these dates wrong, in 2005, and ultimately approved by town meeting in 2007, and it seems after a decade or so that reviewing the overlay district and coming up, spending some time, I think it's gonna take a while, quite frankly, ultimately having the land use boards and, and whoever else should be involved in discussing the prospects of either leaving it the same or altering it is appropriate, given the fact that it's been 10 years since it was last passed, and quite frankly, not a lot within the sort of master plan of that particular development as yet happened.
Eight years.
But 10 years, it was '05 when the, when the, when it was first discussed, and '07 was the passing of the law.
When it actually passed.
Correct, yes. And I figure it's gonna be, it'll take a committee, you know, I, I doubt if they would be down for this town meeting. So, I was looking, I sent that to, to you, Ms. Watson, and was wondering if the board is supportive of forming a committee evaluating that?
I am.
So, there'd be members of the ZBA, and a member of conservation, and a member of planning, and probably headed up by Erica Foray, community economic developer, and they would come back and say, "We've reviewed this plan," and probably find a way to support those folks with a consultant, like we had last time, in terms of looking at options.
You don't think they should be a member of this board?
It can be. That's, I, I would throw out one model for the sake of kicking off a conversation, and I'd be open to, again, I see that as really the board making the charge. The board has individually communicated to me, interested, and wanting to sort of look at that overlay, so.
I think a member of the VOS is a good idea.
So, if you guys could submit resumes with your interest, that would be helpful.
You're gonna, you're gonna line up some questions for us, prepare.
You give me a deadline by which you'll tell me which member of the board.
I suppose, yeah, is somebody interested in it?
A little humor, Dawn, I was trying to lighten things up a bit.
I mean, I was on the original zoning board when this was passed, so I certainly am interested in it.
Right, I mean, you would bring so much to the table with it, too, from the-
Yeah, learning curve, too, so, yeah.
Right.
Throw it on any of us.
Well, I don't know about that, there's a lot of problems up here, so that's, it was a long time, that was a lifetime ago, 2007. But no, yeah, I would, I would be willing to do that.
So, I'm looking for the board to support the idea, and then we would formally ask the individual boards to provide us with their representatives.
Do we have a, do we have a most-
And you can create the membership of the Board of Selectmen if you'd like.
I'll move approval of the manager's request for a formation of a board to study the Osgood 40R process, or 40R development. Osgood, I can't say that word.
Can we change that? I don't like it at all.
Can we just stick another O in there for something?
Osgod. It's so awkward.
Right, it should be AlsGod.
AlsGod.
Right, it should be, it should be O L S G O D. It shouldn't be O S G O D.
Who should have finished?
I did.
Do we have a second?
I started in 2010.
Second.
Yeah, okay, let me-
That's what, that's what it's written in the bio.
You got it, Larry? Make them, so I'll immediately motion to include a member of the Board of Selectmen on that committee.
Favor second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, unanimous.
It's always good. It's always happened, but it's always good.
Madam Chairman, we move for the acceptance of a donation from Brooks School. If you may recall, the board may recall, this is the third of three $10,000 donations associated with the Kittredge Gym.
So awesome.
Move to accept the donation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, and thank you.
Yeah.
I moved to whatever Jeff wants.
Whatever Jeff wants.
Well, Jeff needs to provide clarity on the timing, right, the tree light timing, because we have, we have-
Good to go?
Good to go, Jeff. We just don't know what time.
I can't do that.
I tried already, I already tried.
Entertained, dude.
I know, but it's-
What is the timing of the, of the event?
Five to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
But we shortened it. Last year, we had an extra hour. We shortened it because it was so cold, but people can linger, they're welcome to linger this year. We're also having the high school choral group come in and do some caroling this year, which is a nice addition.
Oh, nice.
We're gonna have hot chocolate and Santa there, cookies.
You gonna have the big switch again this year?
We're gonna have the big switch.
Oh, God.
We'll have the big switch, yes.
What's the date again?
Uh, it's going to be the 29th versus the 28th, which is the day of the parade.
Are you guys looking for anything from the community, any donations, any volunteer support?
Now that you mention it, Phil, yes, actually, we are. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to rejuvenate the lights on the Christmas tree in the middle of the common. They're a little sad-looking, they're faded, the tree has grown dramatically. The women's club, number of years ago, probably about 20 years ago, in conjunction with the festival committee, they made a great donation, paid to have all the lights strung all over the common, and now it's getting to the point where, you know, it's looking a little sad. So, the festival committee took it upon themselves now to get some funding together that we have. We've purchased new LED lights, multicolored, so we don't offend anybody with the, with the blue lights that are the standard LEDs, but we're, to be in compliance with the towns' initiative, we're getting C9 LED lights to put on there. We have 79 sets that we purchased. That's the maximum amount you can string into one set of the LEDs. I don't know if it's gonna be sufficient, but our little funding that we had was enough to cover that, as well as our other expenses. So, if we're gonna require more in the future, we're going to make additional purchases. You may have seen some brochures or some forms around that we've had requesting donations of $40 to buy a string of lights, buys a string of lights and an eight-by-eight inch, either gold or silver ornament that will be personalized by Dawn Sign Tech, that we're gonna hang on the tree, and you can either leave it on the tree if you like, or the end of that night, we'll gladly take it down. You can take it home as a keepsake.
And people can contact EJ Folds at the Police Department, right?
Absolutely. EJ Folds, there are applications here, and the checks should be made up to the festival committee, so that way we can just get that rolling. And, but we've already purchased the lights, so we're just trying to, you know, make up for the difference now.
Fantastic.
And I think ultimately, we're gonna need more. So, hopefully, the night will be a great success. Hopefully, it won't be as cold as last year, if you recall, and should be a good time, so.
Awesome.
So, did you, so did you say where people could send their money?
Uh, yeah, they can send it to the Town Hall, 120 Main Street, care of the festival committee. Again, applications are available online as well, and if you need a personalized logo for your business or corporate entity, you can send that to N A F E S C O M at gmail.com, and then we can pass that on to Dawn Sign Tech, and she'll print up your logo on the ornament, and we'll hang that on a tree as well. So, any personalization, we can do it that way as well.
And because it's, it requires quite a bit of money, I presume you'll even be taking donations even after the lighting-
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
In the event that you haven't collected enough to-
Yeah, which we haven't as of yet. The lights, the new lights are gonna cost approximately $1,200, and now, so far, we have about $600 in donations. So, we're moving in the right direction, and we appreciate anything anybody can do.
But that date's coming up real quick.
It is, it is. The reason why we set the arbitrary date of the 19th, as you see on the application, is that way it gives Dawn Sign Tech a little cushion to be able to print up the ornaments. Otherwise, we could've just, you know, had it go on out, but it's, in fairness, that's the reason why we did that. So, we'll gladly accept donations after.
So, my goodness, Jeff, how many years has it been since we've been lighting up those trees? Probably-
Ooh, good question, Rosemary.
Close to 20.
Yeah, we, back in the days when we were meeting at the library, if you recall, when the Selectmen were meeting at the library, we had, as I said to Ann Con-
We might be there again.
I know, Joe Delgado, et cetera.
That wasn't that long ago.
At the beginning, Ray, at the beginning. It's probably been, what, at least, what, 15, 20 years?
15 to 20, yeah.
We won't need a table script.
I'm usually shod on it. You know, it's usually a lot longer. I think everything happened last year and it was 10 years ago. But it's, it's been a while.
Yeah.
So.
Through the efforts of many. Thank you very much, again.
Thank you. Thank you for approving the event. Hopefully, it will grow well.
We need a motion, we haven't approved anything.
They will, they will approve.
Move approval.
Move approval.
Five to six.
Just move it. So, make a motion?
No, you did.
That's fine, I'll second.
Do we have to change the time? Would you say five to six?
Five to six. The reason why we put the, the time I put on there was for the prep time for us to get out there. It's for the use of the common, but the actual event is five to six.
Yeah, I think it'd be good, no, it's in a bucket.
So, move, as written, four to six, November 29.
Right.
One second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye enthusiastically.
Now, I thank you for approving it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay, we have no licensing commissioners, no old business, no new business, but we do have public comment. Public comment?
Mr. Barker?
Mr. Barker, are you here for public, yeah, for public comment?
George Barker here, Farmer Barker to most everybody, and I've been farming Barker's farm for 80 years, and I decided it was time to retire since I was over 70. I have four different farmers working in this land now. My, my daughter is raising hay, the stand is still gonna be operating, and we have a beginning young farmer that is trying to make, to get started and be a farmer. I don't know why he wants to be, but he does. Isaac Willett, maybe, I'm sure some of you know him. The North End has always been very feared of the farmers, as far as I'm concerned, and the one thing that has happened this year is the, the water rate, which I'm sure conserves water for the, by the homeowner with the two-rate system. But for a farmer that needs water and uses it judiciously, I must say, with drip irrigation, much drip irrigation, it, it is definitely a burden with having two rates once you get over the 20 units. I was wondering if it would be possible for him to get a rebate on his $1,500 water bill. I see that's a subject for, for conversation.
But, you know, having said that, Mr. Barker, I think, I don't know, maybe it's a subject that we should study, at least in the, you know, the farms require water, and it's our food supply. Maybe there should be a separate rate for irrigation of some sort for, when it comes to food. I'm sorry, what?
Isn't there a separate rate?
There is, but it's just, I think we know that the small farms, it's a, it's a struggle, and they're dependent on weather, that I think it, perhaps it is a discussion, at least we should talk about. We have, how many farms do we have left in town? Not too many.
There's only one that is using water. The other, the squash farmers are down near the pond, my pond, which, of course, I used extensively, so that I didn't need the town water. But he is up by my house and is using it every, every day almost, so it's not economical to pump.
Right. So, what you're basically asking for is that they would-
$2,000 worth of water at one time.
You know, we're not talking about keeping a lawn green, we're talking about food. So, what you're basically saying is that you think we should probably have that one, that first-tier rate, perhaps, for the farmer? Is that what you're saying?
Well, the first tier, how can we argue with it? That's, that's the cost, or, or almost the cost that the town, the town has to pump it.
But the question I had was for an abatement.
But there is, there is a water, if you have a problem with your water.
Right, but there is, there is no problem, you know, the bill wasn't incorrect, technically-
No, the bill was not incorrect.
It was all correct, so technically-
It's been a, it was a very tough summer for it.
Right. Technically, it's, it's, there is no abatement available, because there was no, there's, technically, there's no abatement available, because there's, there was nothing wrong, the, the, the-
Wasn't a broken meter, wasn't it?
Right, the water was used, and, and, right, there wasn't a broken meter or anything along those lines. So, I think Selectmen stew it, and, and I think Selectmen Smedely, too, I'm sure everybody agrees, that maybe it is something that we need to, to look at and, and study, not study, I hate that when people say that, "We'll look and study."
Oh, no.
You know, we need to look at it and, and see what changes we can make for, you know, the rates for, for our farmers.
The tier, I mean, even, Mr. Barker was saying that, you know, that the first tier is fair, because it's what, what costs to pump it, but it's that second tier.
It's the second tier.
So, yeah, I mean, I think there's certainly something we should look at for a farm that makes their living, as like we really said, produces food.
Where the farms are already set at a different rate because of being a farm, it would be, well, we should discuss.
I just, I, I think, you know, the, the, what was paid already, there's really not much to be done there, because there's no payment. But going forward, we can look at changing that for a farm.
Andrew, I see your, your thinking. Are you thinking that there is a possibility, or you wanna think about it a little bit more for-
The board is the water and sewer, ah, the water and sewer.
Oh, there you go.
I'm not saying, I, I think it's, it's, I would, I would be supportive of the idea with, with one sort of caveat, that the definition of what you're going to obey really be about, you know, making sure it's narrowed to what it is. Working farms of a certain size, maybe those that are qualified under 61A, that already get sort of a reduction of tax value because they're open space. If it was confined to that group, then you're finding a way to support the farms, you're still charging, it's the lower rate. I, I could see how the board would be supportive of that.
At that point, would it allow us to-
I'd be prospective, I would, is that what you had it?
Yeah.
I think you'd likely be prospective. It's, you've been, when was the bill issued?
The bill would be for 10/14.
That's when it was issued, or when's it due? Have you paid it?
That was when it was due. Payment on, on a before.